Want to call this meeting of the Planning Board for the City of Palaca for December 5, 2023 to order. If you would please stand for the invocation by Pastor Mulberry and Pledge of Allegiance by Annie Burnett. Pastor Mulberry, if you would please. Mulberry.
Yes, sir. Father, again, we thank you for this day and we thank you for how you blessed us to see it. You brought us together again for the time of sharing. We pray that I would bless our gathering. You would give us the wisdom that's necessary, God, in our decision makings that would be fair and equitable. We thank you now for what you're doing, God, for this city and for the great things that you're going to do for us. We look to you and we trust you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Bless you.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is certified by
Our Pledge of Allegiance, certified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Ms. Krantz, will you call the robe?
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair Barnes.
Here.
Mr. Deluch is not present for the record. Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Mr. Burnett.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Owens.
Here.
Chair Killeberg.
Here.
We have a forum in the chamber, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Krantz. At this time, has anybody got any questions or about the minutes from the November 14th meeting? Not going to have a motion to accept them?
I move to accept the minutes from the November 14th meeting.
Yes, sir.
I second.
Okay, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion passes.
Appeal procedure, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped over that completely, didn't I? Oh. Any person wishing to appeal any decision made by the Planning Board with respect to any matter considered at such a meeting will need a record of the proceedings and for such purpose may need to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceedings is made, which record includes the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based for our statute 286-0105. Hmm, okay. Public comments? Are there any public comments at this point about anything? Seeing none, I'm going to close that part of the meeting. We'll go on to regular public business. Who's, Ms. Walsh, you doing PB 2327?
I am, sir. Lisa Walsh, Planning Director, City of Palaca. Thank you, Sonny. The subject parcel is the Palaca Mall located on State Road 19. I'm going to assume you all know where that is. There's the map on the screen. The application is to subdivide the main parcel into four different parcels, commonly known as out parcels. Not sure. I was looking for, oh, yeah, one of the, the next page, next one down, please. Sorry, next one down. Down. We have to go to the, the map one. There you go. So there's, on this drawing, there's two parcels that you can see to the left-hand side of the document. One of them is located behind the mall and the other one is located to the north part of the mall. This should be, could have been rotated, but it wouldn't fit on the page. So north is looking to the left. Right? And then on the next page down is the last one at the south end of the mall. The plat was reviewed by staff in accordance with chapter 177 of the Florida statutes. And I had a number of comments. As you can see, they're listed there. There are 18 comments. If my staff recommends that the Planning Board consider approval of the proposed preliminary plat subject to the applicant addressing all the comments listed above, or alternatively, staff recommends a preliminary plat be tabled until the applicant addresses all the comments listed above. Staff will stand for questions.
Any questions, Ms. Walsh?
I mean, is there good reason to table it or it's either or, one or two?
Yes, ma'am.
You could deny it, but.
Yes, you could. Right.
Does staff have a preference?
Either way, the comments need to be addressed before anything moves forward.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wallace. I was, yeah, turn on your microphone.
It's, it's got a, it's got a lot of problems.
She cares him.
No, they, they gonna take somebody who find all the problems. But no, uh, the big one is that all of these parcels, can we go back to that? Where it shows the parcel. Yeah. It doesn't matter which way you turn it. All of those parcels, if you look, there's no right of way to any of them. You gotta have rights of way to access them in and out. It can be an easement. And if it's an easement, the math's gotta be on it, the geometry, so that you can locate them without any doubt. And if it's not an easement, there's gotta be dedicated rights of way. They can be private and not dedicated, but you know, that's, that's the big one that I see. And there's all several contradictions in the plat. They're called one thing, like the, I think it was the lots that I read. The lots are called one thing and one piece of typing, and the next piece of typing, they calling them something else, you know? That every, everything's got a jive there and, you know, it's, it's sloppy at best.
Okay. Pete, you got something to say? You waved your hand at me.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else got anything to say? I was going to ask if I ain't that far behind myself this morning or this afternoon. Maybe I am. I caught it this morning. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Walsh. If you state your name and address, please, miss.
Christina Evans with Matthews DCCM, 7 Wildo Street, St. Augustine. So for these comments, I've already contacted the surveyor and a lot of the correction and additions have already been made. And before the final plat, we would obviously do number six, the easements, updating the legal descriptions, title of opinion. I did do the math for number eight to make sure that there's adequate parking for the existing uses. And using the city's calculations and the best of our knowledge for the variables such as number of treatment rooms for the VA hospital or VA clinic and everything, we came up with about 831 parking spaces. If you use just a general commercial variable, it's about 631. So the current mall has 1,002 parking spaces and you would lose almost 200 with the out parcels A and B. So there is sufficient parking for the existing businesses in the mall. Obviously, number 11, we would do a traffic statement before the final plat. That was not indicated as being required for the preliminary plat approval. And then number 18 is the only one that's not really a correction is the requirement to do a PUD for any development over 20,000 square feet. When you take out the parking and landscape, it looks like parcel C would be the only one that is over 20,000 square feet of development. So that would be the one that would be required to be a PUD. But we are not proposing any residential or mixed use. Usually that is what you would do for a PUD. And also there's a time limit for when it has to be developed. Once you have approval of a PUD, it has to start within two years. And the plan is not to develop these out parcels within two years. So then those would expire by the time that we did them. So we would not want to have to do number 18 to do a PUD for every art, that out parcel.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions?
Yeah.
Earl, I'm sorry.
The, the parking, it needs to be shown. You gotta have easements, restrictions of parcels for the parking. They're not showing.
For vehicular circulation?
Ma'am?
Or the, are you talking about access easements throughout the parcels or parking?
Enough parking there for the VA.
Yes.
You need to show some parcels there that are going to be parking easements or something to that effect to get the parking spaces in there without saying they can just park 800 cars over here.
So the original parcel D, that one has enough existing parking and then the other out parcels would handle parking onsite. If they would not be able to, then we would probably ask for a shared parking agreement. But that would be something decided later once there are actual specific businesses going into those parcels.
I do need to note that this is an application for a preliminary plat approval, which is, is not the final plat approval under Florida statute 177. So this is at the, the graphic phase. So one thing you could do is approve of a preliminary plat approval contingent upon these various factors identified in the staff report being complied with by the applicant before they get scheduled for their final plat approval.
Thank you. Do you have any further, anything further?
No, we've already made a lot of these changes. We've already made a lot of these corrections and additions. I just wasn't able to get the revised preliminary plat here in time for this meeting.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak to or for this or for this or against this? Okay, with that, I'll close it to the public, come back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
Need a motion?
Yeah, I need something, yes, sir.
I, I move that we table it till we see the preliminary plat.
Have a move, a motion. Is there a second? Okay, motion dies for lack of second.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the proposed preliminary plant subject to the applicant addressing all the concerns listed by staff.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Can, can, and other things that aren't mentioned by staff there.
Those will.
Things that.
Those will come up before the approval of the, the plat next time.
And we'll get to see it again.
Correct?
This will come before planning and zoning or planning board before the final plat approval.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Seeing none. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Walsh? Okay. What's the matter with you? You're like.
Uh, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
To the board. My name is Pete. Uh, looking at case PB 2333, this is continuation of three parts. This section, the third of three parts is a continuation of two. The address is 10 K Larkin Circle, the applicants, the City of Palaca. Somebody here is representing the owner and I know the city manager is here as well. He can also answer questions. I'll get into the parcel numbers at the end. So this is a request to amend the future land use and the zoning for 1.49, 0.49 acre parcel. To change the future land use from public buildings and grounds to industrial and to change the zoning from airport zoning AP1 to light industrial M1. The current parcel has two structures on it that are currently being considered for use.
Microphone, sir.
As the City of Palaca.
Renee just came in and said Casey doesn't have his microphone on.
Is that better? Oh, that's, that's much better. Okay.
Sorry, I could hear you. So I wasn't.
That's, that's, that's fine. That's much louder than it was before. So I'll just, just to repeat really quickly. The future land use will be changed from public buildings and grounds to industrial and the zoning would be changed from airport zoning to light industrial. Again, it's a land use and rezone. It's a property already in the City of Palaca. The parcel currently, like I said, has two structures being considered for use of the City of Palaca Public Works facility. And I'll try to get through, there's a lot of information. I'll try to get through it quickly. But this parcel was originally intended to be part of the case that was heard before the Planning Board on November 14th regarding additional parcels in and around the airport. However, the GIS map and property appraiser records had a discrepancy and staff needed further time and research to, to look at the actual land use zoning. The property appraisers records reflected land use of industrial and zoning category of light industrial M1, while the GIS symbology showed a land use of public buildings and grounds and a zoning category of airport zoning AP1. Thus, staff did not initially include this parcel in the previous presentation. That's why it's coming before you today. Staff located ordinances 1148 and 1149, which revised the land use and zoning on this property to public buildings and grounds PB and airport zoning AP1. All three of these parcels, if passed today, will be kind of rolled together and presented before the City Commission on December 14th. Again, pending approval. If you go to your page 26 in your packet, figure one shows the subject parcel. You can kind of see in the colored area there, the, the couple of buildings that are on the site. Table one shows the actual uses, the, the surrounding area uses, zoning flum. And it's primarily the airport. It's an industrial area. It's vacant. It's wooded. There's a lot of space around that area. The building itself is next to one of the old airport runways. Skipping ahead to page 27 in your packet, figure two shows the existing flum, which again is public buildings and grounds. And the applicant is proposing a future flum of industrial and figure three on your map there. Page 28 in your packet, I'd like to highlight just really quickly, the proposed development will not add to the population density of Palaca as it is classified as an industrial parcel. And the parcel is already within the existing city limits, so water and sewage services are available. On page 29 of your packet, figure four shows the current zoning, which is AP1, airport zoning, and of course, again, future zoning. I'm sorry, the current zoning is AP1. The future zoning would be light industrial M1. And you can see the maps there on those pages. Page 30 of your packet, staff has, there's plenty of analysis there. Staff finds no problems with points A through Q. Although I just really quickly wanted to highlight on point P, page 31, Palaca has a limited amount of available industrial land within the city limits. Much of this land is already developed. And while it would not be impossible to find another site, it would not be on land the city expects to own and have an existing building already onsite and suitable for the public works operations. So just really quickly skipping ahead to staff recommendations. Staff recommends amending the future land use designation of parcel 03-10-26-0000-0010-0040 from City of Palaca, public buildings and grounds to City of Palaca Industrial. And staff recommends amending the zoning of parcel 03-10-26-0000-0010-0040 from City of Palaca Airport Zoning AP1 to City of Palaca Light Industrial M1. And again, I can stand for questions as can the city manager.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the board got any questions? No? Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak against this? In favor of? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
So I'm, I'm sorry, we're not going to hear from the owner applicant?
Just, just a reminder, and we can pull the slides up again, but we've got two issues going on here. We have a quasi legislative because you're changing your future land use map. So you're changing the policy and also quasi judicial where you are basically applying the policy. So it is important to hear from the applicant because they have the burden of proof.
Yes, ma'am.
I can just text you what to say. You want to try that? All right, Jonathan Griffith, uh, two zero one North Second Street, uh, city manager. Uh, I think Casey did a great job explaining the application. I think you all understand what we're trying to accomplish out in this area. You had a previous, uh, future land use amendment and rezoning on other parcels. We're trying to square up what is known as the industrial park at the end of the business, business park adjacent to the airport. So we appreciate your consideration of this request and hoping to move it forward to the city commission. Any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I get my hand slapped again, you gonna talk?
Jeremy Alexander, one thirty-four Timber Lane, Palacka, Florida, representing the applicant, Mr. Jeff Nations. And I will not be shown up by Mr. Griffith, the applicant, so, uh, appreciate your consideration.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak to or hold? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. What's the board, board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board approved the amending of the future land use designation of parcel oh three dash ten dash twenty-six dash zero 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 dash zero zero one zero dash zero zero four zero from city of Palacka Public Buildings and Grounds PB to city of Palacka Industrial IN.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Second. Mr. Burnett, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. All those opposed, seeing none, motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve amending the zoning of parcel zero three dash one zero dash twenty-six dash zero 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 dash zero zero one zero dash zero zero four zero from city of Palacka Airport zoning AP one to city of Palacka Light Industrial M one.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Seeing discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. What was that?
That was a late tie, sorry.
Okay, well, I said aye, not pointing your finger up there. All those seeing none, uh, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Walsh, are you up to bat this time?
I am.
Thank you.
Lisa Walsh, planning director. This is case PB twenty-three dash thirty-four for a PUD amendment at one-two-one Crystal Cove Road. That address is essentially for the existing stormwater pond at the curve right by, um, Crystal Cove Marina. And it's on the northwest part of that curve. It's intended, though, to cover the entire PUD and all of those parcels that currently exist within it. They have, have an existing future land use of recreation and open space with a zoning designation of PUD or planned unit development slash recreation and open space. The proposed use is non-residential and will not increase the population of the city of Palacka. The existing development plan was adopted in twenty seventeen via ordinance, ordinance seventeen dash twenty-four. That plan provides for allowable uses and development standards, guest rules, a site plan, a demolition and tree removal plan, and a conceptual stormwater drainage plan. Construction was started shortly thereafter, but only a rough unpaved road and a stormwater management pond was installed. This preserved the PUD ROS zoning per section ninety-four dash two thirty-nine of the Palacka Code of Ordinances. The applicant has approached us to revise that, those development standards within that PUD to make the forty spaces, make thirty percent of the sport forty spaces that are currently in the development plan to be used as park models rather than straight RV sites. They are requesting park model RVs, or park models, park model sites for thirty percent of those forty, which would be about twelve sites. They are also, uh, asking to remove the requirement for an in-ground pool, spa, or similar facility as well. In addition to the thirty percent of the park models. And lastly, they are requesting to change the maximum stay or the length of occupancy to six months instead of fifteen days. And those are consistent with what the statutes, Florida statutes say that a typical, um, RV park could have as a length of stay. The next couple of pages in the staff report show the existing site plan. Not very large, of course, but, uh, and then on the second page is what they're proposing. So there's slight modifications mainly in that area in the center part of the, um, middle top polygon. So that shows the removal of the, um, pool and spa, and they will still have a clubhouse there, though. So staff recommendation is that in general, we recommend approval of the amended development plan. However, the planning board should give special consideration to the park model change. If this provision is approved, staff recommends the board consider additional screening of these units as well as requiring sidewalks and enhanced pedestrian crossings for patrons to access, access facilities to the east and south of the site. So they're going to be directly across from the marina and the proposed hundred and seventy-seven acre RV site to the south. Their rationale for removing the pool and was to encourage people to utilize the pool that's being proposed on the hundred and seventy-seven acre site. And so there will be a lot of back and forth, and that's why the recommendation to enhance the pedestrian crossings to those other facilities. The, uh, additional screening for the park models would be something along the lines of additional landscaping or enhanced landscaping, just as long as it couldn't be seen from the street. And that's something the applicant has discussed, uh, with me. They have, they have also proposed a six-foot-high vinyl fence around the perimeter of the property, so that may or may not be as big of an issue as the enhanced pedestrian crossings. You should also know that the applicant held an additional community meeting last week on, uh, the November twenty-ninth. The results were provided to me earlier, and I was looking, there she is. Um, and I would, uh, allow the applicant to address that meeting if she wishes. Is that? Okay.
Are you there?
All right, so, uh, then this is Kathy Ebaugh from JB Pro. She is the applicant's representative.
Okay, hang, hang on just a minute, ma'am. Do any of the board have any question of staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll let the applicant address us.
Good afternoon, for the record, Kathy Ebaugh, AICP. Um, I represent JB Pro and we represent the applicant. We have talked to the staff about their conditions and the sidewalk makes sense to us. We think it's inappropriate, uh, in order to connect the smaller forty acre, or the forty unit site to the larger site, which is where we will have more amenities, um, and where we would really like to direct people to participate in the activities that are happening across the street. We, um, also, we've also discussed putting the park models interior to the property that we would identify and guarantee that those sites would be interior to the property rather than have them be on the outside where they would be visible to the street. And are those your two conditions? And that would, so those would, that would address those two conditions. One, we would look to put the, the park models interior to the property. The owner of the property is here. He can explain to you why that is actually advantageous for him, um, in terms of the mobility of these units and park models, as was discussed when we brought the larger parcel before you earlier this year. Um, these are standard, these, these are units that would be set in place and not moved. So having them interior to the property where we, uh, and on corners that is hard to access otherwise makes sense for the project. And in terms of sidewalk, like we said, it makes sense for us to be able to connect, um, the people would be staying at the smaller site to the larger site and the amenities therein. Are there any other questions?
Any board?
So are we going from an RV park to a mobile home park?
No, this is just like the RV park that we have proposed and was approved earlier this year across the street. The, these park models, um, are not a mo, it's not a mobile home. Um, it is, they think about them as, um, spaces that are used for, say, you are camp, uh, we have a, like someone who's camping and they want their grandkids to come down and spend some time with them. It would give them an opportunity to stay on the same facility as we would. Um, everyone would be required, if you change the length of stay, everyone would be required to meet that length of stay regardless of whether you're staying in your own RV site or if you're staying, uh, in one of the park models. And the, the change in length of stay mirrors the same, in fact, in general, the, the concept here, both in terms of the number of park models as well as the length of stay, they mirror the approvals that we received for the property across the street earlier this year.
But we did approve, now, don't expect me to remember that far back. So we approved the six months?
Yes.
I didn't remember that neither, so.
Yes, we, we, we have the, we, we received the six months, we received the park models, um, on the other site. So these, the, the changes we're asking for this smaller parcel mirror the same, um, approvals that we receive for the larger site across the street.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak against this? Come forward and state your name and address, please, sir.
Danny Brown, two-two-six Crystal Cove Drive, Palacka.
Okay.
The original change of plans for the corner piece of property with, with the drainage pond or the retention pond there. We, as a group of the occupants of Crystal Cove, were concerned about the appearance, the maintaining and the availability of certain amenities to the, I'll, I'll use park residents to maintain a comfortable stay. Within that, we did not approve a six-month stay. It was a thirty-day stay. Uh, the owners of the property and their representation came to us and said, this is going to be an ultra-high-end RV park. And they use this similarity to the Renegades, south of Palack, which is a very nice setup. Our concern, or my concern is, you go to six-month stay on RV, RV sites, or even park model sites is considered a lease. And I've been an avid camper for over forty years. I've seen what happens to, to RV setups for elongated stays. We get temporary sun shades, we get coolers stacked outside the campers, we get firewood stacked outside the campers. We get, sometimes we even get cars with no tags sitting on there for that, that stay. My concern is not the, the degrading of the original plan was to make a high-end park. You're next to a high-end in Palacka standards, a high-end residential area. We did not want that bring the property values down because of that. So my, my suggestion is, even though we're adding another piece of property on the other end of the circle there, you might say, is that that place there in question should maintain the standards that go all past and the city commission passed in two thousand seventeen. It's not to get everything approved and the approval of homeowners and neighbors, then come back so many years later and want to change that because you're adding another piece of property on the other end of the street. My concern is that it's, it's going to degrade that property over the long period of time. And to give you an example of that now, the same owners have the marina or the campgrounds in the marina.
That's your time.
It's within the chair's discretion to have more time or cut off at three minutes.
I'm sorry, the timer's a new thing to me. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, I've watched numerous RVs come and go into there. A lot of the, uh, RV stayers there have been working at the power plant. And, uh, from time to time, Kelly, who was the manager of that place, had to remind those people to clean it up. Now, right now, we've got cars sitting there with no tags on. We got coolers stacked outside campers. The grounds are not maintained. The areas between the campers are overgrown. Originally, when the landscaping was put in there, it looked very nice, but it has not been maintained. My concern is, this is what's going to happen on the other side of the street when we have long stays. There was, uh, there was talk about having an onsite manager or a host camper, you might say, in that area to help oversee that. I don't, that hasn't come back up. Are we, are we going to drop that? If not, the place is going to go downhill quick. So my concern is, we passed it in two thousand seventeen, allowed it to go through the planning board and the city council to these standards. Now we're going to change these standards. It's going to go downhill. That's all I have to say about it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a yellow speaker's card.
I'm sorry?
Yellow speaker's card.
I don't.
Just reminding you.
Would you fill out a yellow speaker's card at the end? And the yellow speaker's card up there on the scene, would you fill that out and give it to me, Miss Grant? Thank you. Do you have anything else? Did you like to add? I mean, I'm just.
The, um, intent still is to do this as a high-end RV park. We recognize, um, some of the challenges that are in the existing small site, but as we develop new sites, we will have onsite management, um, that will make sure that those issues are addressed. So we, um, we are mindful of what we have promised our neighbors, and that is our intent to have this be a high-end resort. That is why we have the amenities that we've put in across the street. Um, those are the types of amenities that will attract high-end, uh, RV users. And, um, so the more units we get, the better we will be able to have an onsite management team.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Walsh.
Have you got any rules or something on paper that are going to address his problems there with the cooler stacked out front, cars without tags and such as that?
The owner is here. Since these are operational questions, maybe it's better if, um, Dave McDaniel address these questions directly.
You come forward and state your name and address, please, sir.
I'm David McDaniel with M Three Development, live in Baitland, Florida. So to answer your question, uh, first of all, I share all the concerns that he does. I, I, I'm a hundred percent on board for that. What's interesting about it is, is that the perception is, is that somehow or another, if we have shorter stays, we're going to have better quality, uh, tenants. And in fact, what we're going to run into is, we're going to have a harder time keeping it occupied. And the, the lower the occupancy, the less money we're making, the less amount of money we're going to spend on management to make sure it's done right. So when we get to the point where we develop the larger property on the south side, that's when things are really going to get supercharged, this forty-unit site. Uh, you know, the, the, the length of stay issue is really connected to the fact that, um, because of the location being on the river, we're going to be able to serve both, uh, the summer people who come for the people who come for the vacations and the families. And then during the winter months, we're gonna be able to serve the uh the snowbirds. And so uh the length of stay, the six-month length of stay, uh when we agreed to um agreed to it on on the south parcel, it was in large part so that we could serve that 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 transient group who are here for three to six months. Um there is li- little interest on our part to have this property. We're gonna have a lot of money tied up in this deal. We're gonna make sure that this thing is gonna be managed and run well. Uh frankly, not having enough RV sites is part of our problem at the moment. We we need to get these forty up and built. And we're still in the approval process uh with the city and the county getting our final engineering approval. So to answer your question about, do we have anything written? Uh not at this point, uh but uh uh again, staying on top of these tenants is is part of the job of a manager. And it doesn't, you can have all the rules in the world, and if you don't enforce them, they don't do you any good. So the answer is, we're we're gonna do our best to keep it up and and it's our, in our financial interest to keep it up. So again, I want to reiterate, we share your concerns. But uh shortening the length of stay won't, in my opinion, uh do any benefit to uh keeping the quality of the tenants up. It's gonna be the manager's job to keep the quality of tenants up.
I I don't have any heartburn with uh the length of stay, but you know, with his problems that he sees across the street.
Yeah, so we have eight RV sites over there along with uh uh forty-odd uh boat slips. We're actually in the process right now of clearing out some of the 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 boats, changing policies on how we're gonna be managing the uh the boat, the the people who are who are uh renting boat slips from us. So the answer is, is that is that we're having to work on that every day. And so uh I I believe we can res- resolve your concerns.
So my concern with this is, we're two thousand seventeen when we got the first approval, right? Okay. So and I'm all on board with your, as far as I can see the RV park. I'm an avid RV-er. You know, I mean, I I I've been to some of the high-end thing places and stuff like that, and they're beautiful. But and and I know part of what I'm gonna say has nothing, you you could do nothing about it because you just y'all just came on forward again, right?
That's correct.
You just bought the property and everything like that. But what I see there right now is um, I mean, going into the property where they have, they have nice homes and stuff like that. But I mean, you got industrial right around the corner, right in everything right there. And we all bought at and 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 I'm not being, I'm not downing what's what's going on there. I'm just saying, just telling the truth. So but what I see there now is I see boats parked out there on that property. Um I haven't been there in a month or so, so I don't know if you've moved and what happened. Um I see that property undeveloped. Um you know, nothing was that was almost two thousand seventeen has come forward at all.
Yeah.
So you've got, you've got a uh RV park there with, nothing's been done and nothing's happened. And 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 I understand, like you just said, that you you're going through the process. So what's to convince us, if that's word, or convince me that we're gonna move forward any any more further, or you might sell it?
Well, if you'll, if you allow me, so I I uh, when we first were acquiring the property, uh it was represented to us that we had uh buildable construction plans for the forty RV sites. Uh when we got into it, we found out they were in fact not buildable. So from whatever happened from two thousand seventeen till we acquired the property, uh there was some work done. There was a pond built and some uh roads cleared, uh which I guess preserve of PUD zoning. Uh and then we took it to our civil engineer and they just said, well, you can't build this. So we literally, we had to redesign the whole thing, which takes several months.
Different.
Then we had to go through the process of getting those plans approved. And I'm gonna call it for the first time, even though the something was approved somewhere back there. And so we still today don't have finally approved engineering plans. We're we're working on it. Uh I I I told my original partners that we were gonna have it done in December. And it reminds me a little of that old joke about, well, you pick the month and I'll pick the year. I mean, I, we're hoping it'll be done soon and we'd love to. And we're we're getting bids based on the plans that are not yet completed. We look, where you see some real promising uh prospects of getting it done. And so the answer is, um I can't promise you what's gonna happen because we still are responsive to the market and we're also responsive to, I mean, if the world economy collapses around us, I promise you, we won't build it and you guys will be unhappy with me. But but apart from that, uh we're intending to move forward on the on the larger tract. We've, we've been working diligently on site plans. Uh we we've got something that we think is potentially buildable, and now we're gonna start looking into it with in earnest. So the answer is, is is unfortunately, I'm, some of this is just out of my control. Uh some of it is uh within the realm of of decisions that we need to make, but we still, I still don't have a decision to make. I don't have plans ready to build.
Okay. So what was the outcome of your meeting with, and I don't know if you, did you?
Community meeting?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that was uh, what what day of the week? What's that? That was Thursday night. It started at six o'clock, right? Is that the time we scheduled it? So we scheduled it at six o'clock. Um uh we were there. Uh one gentleman showed up. He happened to be the guy who bought the industrial property that's right behind uh the land. He wants to build an RV and boat storage facility.
He's come before us.
Really excited about. That's a fantastic thing. We chatted with him for, I don't know, twenty minutes. Uh and then we stuck around for a few more minutes and then no one else showed and we left.
Good.
So we 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 felt like we had done what we needed to do.
So my next question, I'm sorry to keep you, but I'm
Oh, that's just fine.
I'm just a simple man and I just need to understand all this.
Don't feel bad.
Um the, so the what you're putting around that part of the park would be a six-foot white vinyl fence? Is that what you said?
Well, I, that was what was said. I I don't remember. What the plans talk about is more of an open view. Now, we we do plan on the uh what would that be? Kind of the west side. We want to have visual barriers. Uh I I again, I didn't realize that that's what we were talking about. That was a new one for me today, but on the side along the road, our intention is to have uh more of an open view. I I hate to call it wrought iron because it'll be something, you know, aluminum or something along those lines, but open, but with landscaping and and that sort of thing. But it's, the intention is, is to have it contained. And then if I'm not mistaken, oh wait, oh, the PVC fence, is that the one on the prop, bounding the property to the north? Bounding to to the neighborhood to the north? Beg your pardon?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, right now, there's just trees. But so the answer is, I I, our intention is, is facing the marina will be more visually open and on the back, it'll be, it'll be more visually impaired.
Okay, cuz my, I mean, and I'm not trying to do this to you, but I'm just, I'm trying to get a good hold on this because when the motel was built and then the addition to the motel was built, which you have no control over or nothing to do with, but in the same instance, we need to look at how that's, how that's handled and how you're gonna be handled. Because I mean, when you go out there and look and as you're going into the community, um you look at that, uh you know, had I bought property out there and put the homes out that I put out there, I'd hate to ride by there and look at all those grills going on and all that stuff that's out in front of that hotel, you know, every day.
Are there grills at the hotel?
Yeah, there, I've I've noticed them. They're
Is that right?
They're out in front of the
Is that true?
In 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 some sidewalks and everything like that. They've, I mean, you know, people park vehicles up there and sometimes they're on blocks. Now, I'm comparing, you know, apples, oranges and sorry, Ms. West, if I'm going too far, but I just, I just wanna pull this apart while we're sitting here, okay? Again, I'm not against what you're doing. I think it would, it it would help Palaca bring people here. Um I just want to make sure that all parties are protected.
Um well, our hope is, is that, is that what we're gonna do will ultimately bring a higher-quality customer to the hotel as well.
Mm-hmm.
Uh uh but I, all I can, all we, you know, we had one of our partners who said, gee, we'd love to buy that hotel and and it's not for sale.
Correct.
So uh the answer is, is uh we're, we can have the influence we have on the quality of the area. And when we get finished, we believe that what we're gonna do is have a a very significant benefit. And hopefully, it'll impact the hotel as well.
I think you're misunderstanding me because
Well, in terms, I I think I would, okay, so let me complete. So then the other part is is what the people who live there are gonna see. And it's still gonna be an RV resort. There's still gonna be RVs and there's gonna be a, you know, probably a picnic bench next next to each one of the RV sites. And there's probably gonna be grills and those sorts of things. Uh I I hope it doesn't become a situation, we will not allow it to become a situation where people are settling in, you know, with the, with the uh whatever, the drying their clothes out on clotheslines or, I mean, none of that stuff will be going on because we're not gonna allow it. And besides, the quality of the tenant that we're gonna be bringing in, that's not gonna be the the character of what we're gonna be doing.
So with the uh landscaping, not gonna have a fence up there, I mean, is your landscaping gonna be sea oats or hedges or along that way?
So I'm a, I'm a fan of uh of things like viburnum hedges uh on the areas that you wanna really block the view. They can get to twenty feet tall, they can get six feet wide, and there's nothing seeing through them. That would probably be based up against the industrial park.
Mm-hmm.
So that's our buffer away from the unattractive aspects of of what's adjacent to us. On the other side, uh you know, in candor, we have, I haven't put all that much thought into exactly how we're gonna do it, but I'm envisioning along the road that is going to be the main road into the residential area by the hotel and into the marina that it'll be, you'll wanna see what's there. I think we're gonna be, it's gonna be attractive, but we're gonna have, we'll we'll have landscape buffers that will provide uh excuse me, landscaping that's gonna prize aesthetic, not so much buffering as much on the front park.
And the entrance is still gonna come off Comfort Road? Is that the way that?
It, there's two entrances, actually, that
But I mean, the main entrance, the way they get designed.
Yeah, there's comfort and then there's off of Crystal Cove as well.
Right.
So the the, the way, there was a discussion about how this particular group of forty units is gonna be checking in. And we have the, we have the check-in, excuse me. Uh the we're gonna be checking in where the current, up, down, down near the marina where we have our office. So that's where the people will be checking in. Most likely pulling in cuz we we're gonna have an online mark, you know, service and you'll be able to pick, pick your spot. You'll know where you're going. And then we'll, they'll be, when we, when they arrive, we'll either send someone up or they'll drive back to the, to the office.
So you're moving, you're not building an office? Cuz when we did this with this particular thing before, that was a concern of the homeowners was the coming in um off Comfort Road down towards, you know, we we said that we wanted it to come, the entrance on Comfort Road, coming in that way because of check-in.
Well, the
Coming from the other e- other end, from the north end instead of coming from the south there.
Oh.
Yeah, and
Yeah, so the the the, ultimately, when we develop the larger RV resort, that's where the main office, the entrance is gonna be right off of Comfort Road. And it's gonna pull, pull the RVs off of the property and onto our site.
Okay.
But the answer is, is to, for the, for the forty units, which is a relatively small number, it's gonna be relatively easy to manage. I don't, I'm not anticipating any concerns on on whether they're gonna back up or or be a a nuisance to the neighborhood.
But what I'm understanding you to say is, is the office is gonna be down at the marina for right now.
For now, it will be, that's correct.
That's, that's where I went a long way around too. I apologize.
Okay.
Um. Earl?
Uh can I ask Lisa a question? Ms. Wal- Walsh? This is under a FUD agreement, right?
Yes.
So are these questions addressed in the FUD agreement?
They're addressed in that site plan that I showed, a part of, part of the site plan that I showed you.
The site plan is part of the FUD agreement?
Yes.
So you're kinda talking about something that doesn't need to be talked about?
Okay, well, that's what I
I'm not, I'm not
That's what I asked because all that was, I I thought it was part of the PUD to begin with.
Started it by my question.
And then, and but then, you know, some of the things that were in the PUD have been changed. What am I, what is I'm saying?
So Mr. Wallace actually brings up a good point. Um there's pros and cons to a planned unit development, right? But a PUD uh calls for a, an innovative development plan. And you can put whatever you want as the governing body into that PUD. So if if there are issues here that you want to have addressed, you can make your approval contingent upon having that in the PUD, which is going to be a record ordinance. So if you have issues, for example, with the type of landscaping, if you wanted native Florida landscaping, if you want a fence of a particular kind, you can codify your intentions within the body of that PUD.
Well, I just, what I've, I mean, what I'm getting at is, it just seems like the things in that PUD or in the agreement from two thousand seventeen are being changed. And so
Three things.
The three things.
Three things.
Right.
It can't be changed without negotiations with the city. And, you know, one side can't change it. It's gotta be agreeable on both sides.
I understand that. Okay, well, I'll quit.
Yes, sir, you're right.
Yeah.
Can I ask Lisa a question? Um does the, moving the park models to the interior as they mentioned, does that satisfy your screening concerns? Or can you?
It depends on the exterior perimeter screening and there, what I had in mind and envisioned was that, you know, perhaps there would be enhanced screening of vegetation around those park models so that they would be less visible, less uh prominent, if you will. And uh my apologies if I misspoke about the ex, the uh perimeter fencing, but that was my understanding from a conversation we had had and I might have mixed it up, but there there will be um significant landscaping around the perimeter.
And like the the material of the fencing seems to be important, but the important thing, no matter what the fence is made of or the landscape, scaping that's uh screened, it's the maintenance of it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you can have, I don't like vinyl fences. I'd rather have a wooden fence, but if it's not, if it's a wooden fence that's not maintained, it looks like garbage. If it's a vinyl fence, we see them all over town, that's not maintained, it's garbage.
Right.
And all, all of that, I think, should be in the FUD.
Already?
We can't govern maintenance.
Huh?
I said, we can't govern the maintenance.
Oh, you can too.
Oh, via code enforcement.
That's
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
My only concern is, and I understand the whole concept with the park models because it is nice to go in because we've done it, but it was cabins that my family stayed in versus, you know, a park model. That's just what the campground supplied, were nice little cabins. And so the the idea of having them there for family to come in where you're camping. But there's gonna be the park models on the bigger piece, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So, I mean, I'm just kinda hesitant with this, the park models being up because that's what, that's what people are gonna see, the hundred and seventy-seven acres or whatever. That's gonna be less visible, isn't it? Because it's, it's down in there. Um so to me, they're two different animals almost i- because of how they're gonna be located. Um I'm just kinda hashing this out in my head. I don't know.
Well
Yeah, go ahead.
My only comment was that there's not much visual difference between forty RVs and twenty-seven RVs and thirteen park models.
And the park models are gonna be, tell me, I, the way I understood what you said, the park models are gonna be compatible with the RVs that would come in there. They're not gonna be little cabins or something like that or uh
Tiny homes.
Yeah, tiny homes or something. They're, they're gonna be compatible with the rest of it, right?
Well, the 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 term park model is a, is a term of art. It's, it's a type of of build, I mean, uh it's actually a vehicle, I guess technically it's a vehicle, but yeah, thank you, thank you. But the uh, the point of the park models, and by the way, these are used the exact type of unit that we're thinking of using is used in all of the top quality RV resorts all over the state of Florida and probably the country. Um one of the guys who told us about One of the guys who told us about, uh, how effective they were as a, as a, uh, uh, product was the guy who sold his RV resort to Margaritaville. And they have a whole bunch of park models, uh, very similar to what we're talking about. So again, I think the concern that you all have about maintenance and about, uh, you know, the quality of tenants and that sort of thing, they're legitimate. They, I hold them greater than you do, believe me. If we end up with this thing turning into a real problem, uh, that's bad for us and our investors. So, uh, I feel confident that we're going to deliver a kind of product that'll make you all proud. And, uh, uh, at the same time, uh, we're going to do our best to work hard at it. And, and again, I, I, the one thing that, that I try never to do is promise because I can't always control everything that takes place in my world. So, uh, but the answer is, is we're going to do our best to provide the best product we can. And, and, uh, even a six month stay, even if someone, like one, one guy was telling me, he said, oh, he, he, he had a, a RV resort in Texas. And he said, we were about thirty minutes from a, an, uh, from a hospital. He said, we had traveling nurses staying there for two months. Well, there's nothing wrong with a young lady staying in a park model for a couple of month, couple of months. So that's what we're talking about. I mean, that's, not only that, but on a nightly rate, these things, we're going to rent between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and eighty-five dollars a night. And on big, busy nights, it's going to be more than that. So I, I, I feel like even the price is something that's going to keep us from having this becoming a problem. So again, I, I, uh, hope that you'll support our plan. Uh, we are asking for only three changes to the plan development. The length of stay, the percentage of park models. And, um, and the third was, uh, the fact that we're building a pool across the street. We decided that we didn't want to have, build a second pool. So that was, those are the only three things that we're changing from the existing plan development.
Apparently, and this gentleman here, I'm not being a smart aleck, you know, but apparently you made everybody happy out there. Nobody showed up to bitch when you had
When we had the, when we had the community meeting for the larger parcel, when we had the, when we had the larger parcel community meeting, we had about, uh, fifteen, eighteen people. And we had a lot of legitimate questions, a lot of concerns. And we, we explained to them what our plans were. And by the time we were finished, I don't think a single one of them came to the, the zoning board or the commission meeting to, to speak against us.
When we approved this thing, first time I left my truck running out there so I could make a quick getaway. I mean, it was, it was rough.
Oh, this one in the set, in two thousand seventeen, you mean? Oh, yeah. I was, that was before my time.
You should have been there. But
Yeah.
Apparently everybody's happy out there.
I, and I think we're going to continue to keep, make everybody happy. So.
Mr. Barnes, do you have a question?
I have one for staff.
Okay. Hang on.
Wait, can I ask?
Hang on just a minute. He was, he, he was Yeah, his finger on the trigger.
Oh.
I have a little for staff, but if you have
Okay.
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 This man.
So back to, um, the, the park models again. Um, I don't have a problem with that, but the amount of people in there. So we know, uh, with Seminole and with Georgia Pacific, so many people come in and I've been in property management before. And knowing, you know, the managers or the supervisors calling, trying to find houses for eight of their men, you know, dumping into one house, that type of thing. So you'll have people coming in to work. And people will cram as many people as are allowed into a unit.
Yeah, I, I, I've never actually had a conversation about the policies for that sort of thing. I can assure you, we are not going to be creating flop, flop houses. I, I, we're not going to be doing it. We just can't afford to.
Right, right.
You know, if, if some, like I, we, we were working on another RV deal. And there was a gentleman who was complaining about the fact that he didn't want an RV park in his neighborhood. And, uh, I didn't say this because I thought it would have been a little insulting, but the fact is, is that some of those RVs, those class A RVs, cost more than the house the man lived in. So, you know, the answer is, we're going to have people who are going to be pulling in with quarter of a million dollar RVs or half a million dollar RVs or more. And the answer is, we can't afford to serve that customer and have someone packing into a, one of our park models for, for workers. So, yeah, but thank you.
I'm sorry I opened up this can of worms for you, but I'm just, the, you know, the, um, the part that we approved for across the street there, I mean, I, I'm all, I'm all for it all, but I just want to make sure because that's kind of out of sight, out of mind, back up in the trees there a little bit. And then this coming over there, and that's the reason I was just asking the questions I was asking.
Well, we are awfully low density. Forty units on eleven acres is a very, very low density for RVs. Uh, i- if you see that the way they cleared the roads, it looks like there's a whole bunch of those pine trees that are going to be saved in and near the RV sites. Uh, I, it's going to turn out really nice.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Barnes, you have a question? You answered it yourself. Okay. Um, okay. Well, does anybody else would like to say anything? Okay. And we'll come back to my board. You all have any discussion, any questions? Did I hear a motion?
You ready?
I'm ready for you, buddy.
Mr. Chairman, I move that this board, um, approve the amended development plan. To allow him to remove the pool, or to allow the applicant, excuse me, to not construct the pool. Uh, and to increase the percentage of, or not increase was to, to allow up to thirty percent for site-built park models. And to increase the occupancy for up to six months.
Okay. I have a motion to have a second.
Oops, sorry. Can I amend that to include, um, as long as we require sidewalks and enhanced pedestrian crossings for patrons to access facilities to the east and to the south?
Okay. Yes, sir, Ms. Wallace. Second. Mr. Wallace, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passions unanimously. Just, thank you very much. Um, staff, have anything, anything further? Does the board have anything further? Ms. West, do you have anything that you would like to add? Thank you very much. Um, have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you.